Would allow me to go first. I'd like to first welcome everybody to the Memphis City Council meeting June 6th. I'd like to go into the meeting, I'd like to go into about ten minute, ten fifteen minute, take a session and discuss a legal matter. Tim, and keep the hall in favor. Phil would give me about ten fifteen minutes.
State Bank and Trust has been invested in Winfield and Marion County for more than a century. And today, we remain deeply committed to meeting the needs of local families and businesses with excellent financial products and friendly down home service.
But more than that, we're dedicated to supporting the growth, success, and well-being of our community as a whole. Because when it comes right down to it, there's nothing more important than community.
And just like our outstanding city officials, police and fire departments, you can count on State Bank and Trust to help make Winfield and Marion County a great place to live for everyone who calls this area home.
Hello everyone, this is Chuck from Span Hardware in Winfield, Alabama. Good to be with you today, and just want to let you know we've got some new things this year for the spring season. As you can see, steel now houses a longboard. We're going to have a full line of the steel zero turn motors. We have a full line of the steel weed trimmer and chainsaws. Just about anything you need to maintain your home this spring and summer. From lawn and garden equipment, to paint, to hardware, anything you need. Come see us, we'll help you if we can. Thank you.
This is Eric Simmons from Furniture Depot. We have a store in Gewin and Fayette. We've been serving the people of Northwest Alabama for twenty-three some odd years. We'd like to be your furniture store if you'd let us. And we'd like to thank you for your business this past year, and invite you to come and shop with us this coming year, and for the years to come. Merry Christmas and have a happy new year.
Hello, Lee Hines here, owner operator of Alexander's Heating and Air. We've been family owned and operated since 1954. Proudly serving Marion, Fayette, and Lamar County. We are carrier factory authorized dealers, but service all makes and models. We specialize in residential and light commercial HVAC systems. So as we get ready to enter another hot Alabama summer, please remember Alexander's Heating and Air for all your HVAC needs.
Tom Bigby Electric Cooperative was formed for the need for electricity to the local citizens that were living in the rural areas of Marion, Lamar, and portions of Fayette counties. This line consisted of twelve miles and twenty-two consumers on the road from Gewin to Sullivan. Between then and now, there has been a lot of hard work and dedication from a great number of people to make this cooperative what it is today. Tom Bigby Electric Corporation would like to thank each member. You can contact us today at (205) 921-6712.
Your story starts at Beville State Community College. Whether you are just starting out or starting over, Beville State has an opportunity that is right for you. With five locations serving seven counties, you don't have to go far to start your own success story. Plus, with tuition lower than four-year colleges, you won't need to spend more for a great education. Visit us online at bscc.edu to learn about your options for seamless academic transfer, and high demand career tech, and health science offerings. Let us help you tell your story.
Enjoy our amazing on-site restaurant and bar with a lunch buffet every Sunday. Relax with a quick getaway with your family, and make a splash in our outdoor pool. Book your next event with us. Call us at (205) 468-4625.
At Bowen Funeral Home, we understand the importance of a personal commitment to provide quality service and products with value to meet every family's need. You will find very caring professionals that truly desire to offer dignified service and true value that families need and desire during the loss of their loved one. With our newly renovated facilities, services, and quality merchandise, you can rest assured that we stand ready to meet the needs of your family in honoring lives lived. Bowen Funeral Home is located at 981 Alabama Highway 253, just south of Winfield High School. Call Tony Bowen, Certified Funeral Service Practitioner at (205) 487-4327.
Ten minutes, Washington.
Appreciate that.
I'd like to welcome all of you all back in to the record session. Go back in. Need to ask for a motion, go back to the record session. James, Gene, a second, all in favor. First item on the agenda is approved minutes from late sixteen twenty twenty-three meeting. I need to ask for a motion to approve those minutes. If nobody's got a question, come and help with the record. James made motion, three second. Dean, I believe, first, all in favor. All right, the next item on the agenda is a water board replacement. The water board co-chairman's here, Kevin. We've got a recommendation from the water board as a letter of recommendation to reappoint James Martin as chairman back on the water board. Basically, you know, James has been there. I've said it, I've missed several meetings, but I've been in several meetings and there's a lot of work to do for the chairman. Chairman has a lot of work that they that they don't, and I personally don't feel like they get compensated like they should for the time that they have to put in with different things, meetings and different things they have to go to. But James has been pretty loyal to that department based on their recommendations. My recommendation to the council is to put James Martin back on the water board for chairman. Need to ask for a motion. James made a motion, ten second, all in favor. Appreciate you coming. Next item on the agenda is Luke Porter with Porter Eagle Bar Motors Incorporated. We've been working, as you all know, with Luke on a giving us a kind of a pretty preview of what it's going to cost possibly to do several paving projects that we're looking at and put together. So Luke wanted to come in and discuss that and also about FEMA money and CDVG. I don't know, you're not here on CBGD.
Well, I was on update while I was here.
Okay, all right. Good deal, Luke, I'm gonna let you have it and explain it to them what you've got going on.
Okay, first of all, I want to say thank you all very much for the projects you've given me in the past, the ones we have now. I do have three, three projects I kind of want to just kind of update and talk about. Two of them will have to have kind of guidance on which way we want to go next. First one is the easiest one is a demo project, the CDVG grant that Mayor spoke of. It is finally all the environmental clearances are done, so we're ready to get the actual designer, the project out to bid. We plan to get all that, all the work together this month and start advertising for that in July. And so that's where we are on that. The second project I wanted to talk to you about is Midway culvert replacement, which was a FEMA project. And first of all, let me say I'm very sorry for how long this project has taken. Just to give you a brief summary of what has taken place. Last fall, we let, back in October, we led this project. And FEMA's original estimate was around $190,000 to replace that culvert. We went to work, designed it, we designed it for what we would consider to be a 25-year flood, which would be three 60-inch culverts. The bid came in at, oh, like it was $470,000 roughly. So of course, we reject that bid, went back to FEMA and tried to ask for more money. We've been, since October, we've been back and forth with them trying to get more money. We've got up to $203,000 and they said that's all we're going to give you. So that leaves us with basically three options that we have. One, we could go back and do it, the three 60-inch like we originally planned for 470,000 and then the city just pay what's left over. The other option would be we could take the 60-inch down to two, two 60-inch pipe and then we're estimating that to be around $320,000. So that would leave the city paying what's left over, which would be roughly $127,000. The third option is to do, replace it basically like it is. What you have in place right now is, it's a 72-inch pipe. It's an old train car rail pipe, 72, and it hooks to a four-by-eight box culvert. So obviously, we can't piece anything together, so we've got to take everything out, put it back together. What FEMA estimated originally was to replace it with a 72-inch concrete pipe. What they did fail to estimate was all the head walls around it. I mean, you can't replace it without taking out all the head walls. So even with replacing it with a 72-inch pipe, we're looking at still, our estimate is right around $260,000. So the city is still be on the hook for about $57,000. There are things we can do instead of making it, you know, concrete. We could try to get a bid on some HDVE. You could get metal. I don't recommend metal because you've got to put concrete all around it and you eventually might have to replace it. So that's where we are on that and I'll answer any questions may have. Basically, I just need guidance on, do we want to go the cheapest route? Do we want to try to get the middle grade or what? One thing, let me add, one of the big problems with that pipe is you've got a gravity sewer and a water line at the end. So the whole deal behind going with 60-inch pipes is we could have put the 60-inch pipe underneath the sewer and the water line and that would maybe give us room to make the sheltering line. So we have, you know, it's very tight road, a very narrow road right through there. So that was the whole idea with doing the 60-inch. With the 72-inch, we're going to have to go back, put some guardrail on there because we will have to stop it at those water and sewer lines. So I know that's a lot, but I answer any, any questions that you may have.
Right, what he's talking about, going on, need that water sewer line down. I don't know if we're getting y'all familiar with that, we're just, midway where this, this pipe is sinking. One, one of the reasons too for being able to go under that sewer and water line is to get more, more shoulder to the road. There's no shoulder on the south side, on the west side of that road going south. There's no shoulder. I mean, it's, it's, it's right there. And then when you, when it's right there, the water and sewer is right there and it's right past it. We don't have any shoulder, any shoulder there. The rains that we've been having, which I think Luke can relate to this. We've got a, back, it's been about 11 years ago, about 11 or 12 years ago. They fixed that, they fixed a concrete flume down on the east side of Midway Drive, down two, from Kirkwood down to Mallard. They fixed a concrete flume. And then they went on the west side of Midway and fixed a, fixed a big drain right there where the dry cleaners is. And it goes underneath the road and then dumps in at Mallard, on the south side of Mallard. Well, I don't know if you've seen there or not, but that head wall there has fell in and that road has sunk where they put that in. The problem I have with going back with what it is, is how, the size that it is, is it's not carrying the water out there. It's not getting the water, but I know that's not the only contribution to the water not getting out there. But that's there at 72 inches, it's not helping get the water out there. I personally, which Luke might can tell, explaining to me, I don't understand why that didn't go on down, stay, stay on the east side of Midway, go all the way to the canal instead of going under and then go.
Yeah, I don't know that.
You know, that, which now, I mean, it'd be an issue, it would be a problem now because it'd flood that field down there. I mean, flood that, that lower field down there. But it turns, goes between that building, Mr. Haney's old building and that Alabama Park, well, the, the, Haney's and the Alabama Park Substation and then that Continental Vivid's house. Either way, it's going to cost the city money.
It's going to cost the city money, yeah.
And it's either 60,000 or 120, that, it's either
roughly, yeah.
It's three figures. 60, 120, 200?
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yes. Yeah. 60, 120, 60, 122, well, basically 270.
270.
Yeah.
Let's mark 270 off.
So, and the other thing, we, when we design it, we design for 25-year flood, which means it's made to only be over top once every 25 years. A two 60-inch is more like 15-year flood and then you get down to the one 72-inch. It's, you know, once every 10 years roughly. So, I mean, again, the range we've been having, it could be the top class, you know, in, in one year, you know, you never know. But because we've had several 10-year floods, we've even had like 25-year flood recently. So when you, when we normally design one, we design one 25-year flood and that was the three 60-inch pipes. So, and you also keep this in mind, this is the same creek that goes under Regal Street. When we did it, it was two eight-by-five boss culvert, so.
And it all went over that and got in that yard and then that basin of the house. The more developments that you do, that way's not going to help. It's going to let water, more water come through faster instead of letting it settle down and drown. But I'm like, you know, James, you know, anytime we hear the big figure, you know, we, we don't need to do that. But what we need to count, one way that we feel like, that I feel like we need to look at is just like when we did this project down here on Apple, when we had a an opportunity to get, I forgot what that, A-trip money, A-trip money to do that bridge. And then it come in way over projection of what it was going to cost and the city couldn't afford to do it. But, but if they should, if they deem that, just I know I'm getting off subject just looking, but if they deem that bridge unsafe, the city would have to pick up the whole bill. Luckily, there was, there were money, FEMA money out there when the storms come through and was able to secure this $200,000 from FEMA because of the storm damage that we had. Had they not ruled that, that was going to happen regardless of whether or not they were FEMA money, is what I'm saying. So we could be looking at the full amount to fix that road had FEMA not declared that a disaster or whatever they call that during that time for that money to be available. Am I correct?
Yeah.
So we're very fortunate to, to even receive money to the $200,000 towards getting that, getting that culvert repaired. What I'm getting at is we could, we could be putting the whole bill instead of partial part of the bill because we was able to do that. And it is getting worse, but it that, I mean, I feel like it's just a matter of time. Two million more of those rains like we've had last year, I believe it'll take it on out. Because it's just, it's too, too deprived.
What was that second amount again? When you said it was a 15-year?
The, yes, yes.
And then the 60 was 10?
Yeah.
And the 270 was 25?
Yes, ma'am.
That, that's one part, that's one thing that you want to know, what, how we're wanting to go forward.
Yeah, basically, I just need to, and I can, I could bid it out. I mean, we already have the design on, on basically the 260. And we're going to do one to 72. So I could bid it out both ways, do alternate A, alternate B, and then we can make the decision after that. We can have more concrete numbers then, if that's what you prefer, or we can just go ahead and decide now what's more. And I can tell you the 72 is going to be much, much cheaper.
10 years is not a long time though. I think the third one's Alabama, to my part.
So I'm pretty sure we're ready. I'm pretty sure we're ready.
Which fifteen years down here, I plan on moving along with that.
I've seen that water over that, I've seen that water over that road and I'm not, I mean, I'm getting on that page, but I've seen that water over that road several times. It's not, it's not going by no ten year, twenty-five year deal. I mean, it's, 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 it's more than that. That water, just like you see Blue's house down here with that, in that water. I know, I know we've seen that happen. I mean, if you figure, I know I've seen it more than four or five times in the last twenty years.
Eight thousand maybe.
That's a sign difference. But, I mean, we, we know people there who get something done. I just want us to make the best investment for us trying to, you know, I, I know it's more money to get it done, but I, I, which, I don't, I don't think within our lifetime we'll see the bypass finished, which is the money and, you know, state doing.
They're still going to do that.
Sir?
They're still going to do that.
I'm talking to, uh, uh, down by the armory across the state bank, across the canal. So we're, we're still going to have truck traffic in and out down there. And, um, I hope the King Cutter's going to be here to stay for a while and there's a lot of traffic coming in from King Cutter and George Rollins. I think they're, they're running real hard. I just, you know, you follow the development down that way for his industry, I just, we've got to have that development. I'm going to, I'll let the council make the decisions without me really making a recommendation. I mean, I should consider that we could been out the whole, we, we, we could be out the whole amount not having FEMA systems. But now, I have asked you this before, Luke, is FEMA going to be okay with us going if we decide to go with three sixties or two sixties versus our seventy-two?
I asked them that and they said, last thing they sent me is, we're giving you two hundred and three thousand, anything over that's on the city, so.
Because a lot of times they wouldn't pay nothing if it's not done back like it was before.
Yeah, that's right.
So we're fortunate they're allowing us to take that money and put with other money to do it the way we want to do it. He just wanted to bring it up, that's something you sleep on, think about or talk about, but he needs to know that before we go put it out for a bid to get it done because we're, we're at that point now, we're ready to do it.
Yes, yeah.
Go let him know, go let you know when to.
Okay.
Give them time to.
Okay.
Do some of that and thinking on it.
Okay. Um, last thing I brought is the paving. I'll go through basically the pages, pages one through three are basically, are the.
Follow them if you will, let me start, but they're, but we kind of throw to council for Luke this afternoon when they got in here and they seen their papers from what it was last time. So that Zach, he's, Zach been in touch with you.
Yes.
If you will, before we go into that, kind of go into the reasoning why we have what we've got on these other sheets.
Okay, so the, the, the theory was the more, the more you, you pass thought you get bigger, the probability is lower the price for everybody, so that's why it was combined. I mean, what, what I suggested doing, you have parking lots, that, most of what Zach is needing is parking lots, the hospitals want a parking lot, and then you guys, most of everything, y'all need is streets. So, um, what I suggested to the mayor was doing was make the streets as, as one bid and then you get a price per ton on, on the street part and then you get a price per ton on that, um, parking lot part, because what will happen if you blend it all together, the parking lots are going to run the price of, of your roads up a little bit more, so. Does that answer your question?
Pretty much, but.
Okay.
They, they were not aware that me and Zach and, and the chamber and the school that have been talking about.
Okay.
And hospital have been talking about paving projects as well.
Okay.
And they come in their package here that's like, you know, and then, you know, you explained it.
Okay, yeah, and, and in the field, everything will be kept up separately, so whoever's paying for what will be, you know, we'll keep up with whatever tonnage is, is on the parking lot, is on, on the road, whatever, um, so it will all be separate now. We will, and then what I normally do when I have bids like this lumped together is, you know, you have items like mobilization and engineering fees that are all lumps on, so I'll take whatever percentage of the total, say his prop party is versus y'all's party, and they'll be responsible for that percentage of the, the lump, the, the mobilization and, um.
Engineering.
Yeah.
Mike, um, if you got anything, is you going to say anything else on it? Luke, is you going to roll or renew it?
Well, I've just.
I had asked Luke because I have, I have failed to, I keep failing to remember, which has been on my list and I keep failing to, his role, his role of Luke.
Yes, that's been added, we're rolling a little bit. There's been several things that's changed since the last one there. I know on the last bid, we had some roads that, like Mallard Drive went all the way across on the west and east side. We took that out, but just the east side, um, there was some, Royal Loop has been added. I think Medical Drive has been added, I can't remember if it was on the original. So, so basically, one through four, pages one through three is the estimate for the cities, what the original, or the cities part, and then page four is an amount showing the city part, and then five and six is the, the hospital and, and the middle school parking lot in the downtown area. And what, you know, what, I don't know if you're, you know, certain you're going to pave all these or you're not, basically, I mean, we can bid it all out and then if, you know, estimate, or the price comes in too high, we can take certain roads off based on priority. Same thing, same thing with yours.
Mayor, I'll need to get with, uh, you know, Dana and Chris because they, we included one big bid of the entire area, but I know Chris had mentioned doing their parking lot behind, we could do ours at State Bank, so I'll need to get with Luke and kind of get that broke out and get that approved at the, the board meeting and then come back to the council.
Right, I, I kind of wanted you to be here, uh, if you could, Zach, is to kind of explain to the council, but I will make sure that, which I don't mind, you probably don't have to necessarily get up to where Luke is. If, if council has any questions or if you want to comment on what, what's, what's your, what the game plan is for the chamber, what, what y'all trying to accomplish or what they're trying to do, I kind of, if you want to discuss that, maybe we'll look at the council.
So the idea, because of the fiftieth mule day is not this September, but next September, is just to revamp that downtown area and we were looking at potentially even partnering with the city to cover that cost, maybe something like fifty-fifty. I know, um, Boyd is wanting an estimate on what we call the city parking lot between Jan's and Vicky's Hair Corner. Uh, Chris had mentioned paving behind his, uh, bank building where his employees park. The bank, of course, would do, uh, State Bank and Trust would do their parking lot. So we've got business owners that are willing to contribute to their part, but mostly the
We had, uh, probably it's been six years ago, I hadn't really looked at what all you've got, what y'all got on there for his paving for his chamber. Is the chamber, is the chamber doing any, is the chamber doing any of the paving, paving for any of the paving? Didn't you just, didn't we say something, discuss something about the chamber going to, toward that project?
Fifty-fifty.
On the, on, on the areas that they've got priced on here?
But I would need to get that, you know, him to break it out specifically for those streets to make sure, but, but the idea would be fifty-fifty.
It's been probably, Todd might remember Angie Manners, probably seven years ago that we passed to, um, mark those lines in between the railroad and RW Harris. Would it be going in this way? They'd be parking this way, stuff straight from RW Harris, be parking toward the east and then parking toward the west, I mean, parking, parking toward the west, going beside RW Harris, parking toward the east on the railroad side. You remember that? They passed, the council passed, which we've never done it because I felt like it needed to be, the road needed to, the asphalt needed to be in better shape before we paid for the striping on that to do that in the handicap places. We have, we don't, there are, we don't have to, I just, we wanted to be here if anybody had any questions, you know, and Zach here if anybody had any questions for him. We don't have to make the decision tonight, we can still study over this and bring it to the council or in between the times, find us to. I'd like to see us get ours out for bid and get ahead of everybody before this, before they really get covered up with paving. That's why I asked Luke to come in and how it's looking in this department. How many projects you said y'all let out this week?
Oh, we just let one, we let two out this week.
Anybody else, anybody got any questions for Luke or Pat, if you want?
Thank y'all.
Appreciate it, Luke. But I definitely need you, boy, you been telling Luke that project back over on Holland.
Correct.
No, fully. I said, no, how?
Me and me, okay.
Yeah, we got a pipe showing over there. I think any problem does.
Okay.
No problem does, I bet. The way that saw, the way that is, that's a, the way that connection to that pipe, the way that connection, how you get in that ditch. A few of connection is a thing for sure. If we, I need to also ask you about if they decided to go with the three sixties or, or two sixties, do we discuss two sixties or three sixties?
Both, but I think three sixties is out.
Okay.
It was a four seventy.
Two hundred thousand off the four seventy, right?
Mm-hmm.
But on either one of those two, you'd have to quiet right away?
Yeah, yes, and we've talked with a lot of the landowners, kind of got that ball rolling.
Okay.
Um, so, I know three sixties will, more than likely a easement or right away will have to be for the two sixties as well.
I, I just want y'all to come and go by and look at that. What's coming, no show. The hospital kind of wanted to have their, their part. They want to try to get stuff done, you know, but I think we've talked to them, told them that wasn't going to happen, but the grand opening next June, uh, what I was thinking.
Don't think that's going to happen. No, I told them it would not happen by June, for sure.
June nineteenth is first day officially, the sixteenth is the vision.
We'll take these and dissect over this and see which way they want to go and then we'll let you know to put it out for a bid or whatever.
Okay.
I appreciate you getting.
Yes, sir.
Getting all this together for us.
Thank you.
You know, trying. What we have done in four paving looks really good, helps the, helps the area wherever it's been done at and all the subdivisions, like I said before. If nobody else has got any other questions or any comments to make to Luke or Zach or the chamber, I'm going to go into that. All right, next item, the agenda's resolution number thirteen forty-eight. This is, uh, we had that, uh, bid open today for the roof to be repaired, um, and the We had four companies, is that correct? Four companies to, uh, to get a bid. Looks like Bond Construction Company, their base bid was sixty-eight thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars, sixty-eight thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars, and then Mid-American Roofing Company, sixty-seven thousand eight hundred and forty-three dollars. Of course, you know, they've got a deteriorated wood replacement is the first one that, the Bond Construction is five dollars per board foot and, uh, Mid-American is four dollars per board foot. Uh, and then deck replacement, the first one was twenty dollars per square foot and then the other ones, uh, looks like it, four dollars per square foot on that as well, on the Mid-American. The other ones, Old South Construction Company, their base bid was seventy-two thousand four hundred and eighty dollars. They, uh, deteriorated wood replacement on the blockings, three dollars and fifty cents a board foot, and then on the deck, it's three dollars and fifty cents a board foot. Uh, and then you've got the, the last one, MG, MG Roofing Company is a hundred and eighteen thousand three hundred and fifty-eight dollars, but nine dollars and thirty-five cents per board foot and five dollars on the deck, um, replacement. This, 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 all this, the bid on some money for this project has come from insurance company, one hundred percent, I reckon. So we need to decide which company we want to go with. My recommendation for the bill is a sixty-seven thousand eight hundred and forty-three, four dollars per board foot replacement.
You got a little square foot and stuff's got to be replaced on there. Some of those bids are not that far apart. If you figure three dollars and a half square foot for wood replacement, twenty.
You figuring, uh, seven thousand dollars and then three dollars, and you figuring fifty cents a board foot difference on the placement.
You didn't get.
No, no, there was a separate, for the, the, separate.
Yeah, that unknown right there for the ditch. My recommendation is to go with Mid-American Roofing Company, sixty-seven thousand eight hundred and forty-three dollars and four dollars per board foot on the blocking, um, replacement in the deck, four dollars per, the dashboard motion fix. We got Keith and Second Gina Hall in favor. We'll get that on the way, I hope that's a relief from the area, get that taken care of. of. I need to ask, council to amend the agenda for the resolution number thirteen forty-nine, I need to ask for motion to amend the agenda for that.
We don't have time in it. That is, that is.
I think that's a different.
Yes, it is.
James and Second, but ten all in favor. The recent fifth resolution number, this resolution, this resolution setting the sales and use tax rate on certain food items to allow future administrations to set the tax rate on these items. I feel like we need something in place for future administrations to be able to set the tax rate on those, those particular items. I need to ask for motion, can we to allow that to happen, but just to put that in place for future administration. James made motion, Keith second, all in favor. How that goes with the informant for the next council meeting. Next item on the agenda is a whole business, and he didn't start Keith, and let me pull up my email.
Yeah, we have to talk about that one.
Let's talk about it pretty much. Find it, right, or I had the hand you take. Give him two, they spoke with Brett, I think, did he include Brett? Where does that email at?
I think he did, because you sent a picture of everything, and you got, I know it's going to be about.
I saved them a lot.
Lots of everything, didn't you?
I got the first one.
Did you get the one today?
I gave Brett the.
She can, you didn't just. I didn't worry about the route, I didn't worry about the timeline of doing. Third week in June, is that correct?
Yeah.
Two weeks, in two weeks.
I wouldn't say that.
I need everybody to hold your breath. We've had other, we've had some more parts come in this week, or let's see, latter part of last week, eight boats. And we've got the valve, everybody's a great interview, and I recommend the valve dot and how we're going to take care of traffic, we're going to basically do it the same way we did when we did the railroad crossing, when they fixed the railroad crossing, due to have very little, if any, issues with traffic that way, instead of trying to control it all right here, what is going to work, we're going to do it actually south of the tracks, is that correct? Pretty much south of tracks on Mallard and Kirkwood. Here's the email. Yeah, I need to check the control plan, unless you know, posted somewhere. Oh, it's, oh, folks installed it this morning, this was actually at, actually this morning, the folks installed it this morning, he's confirming that, confirming that he expects third week in June. That's the last email from, capital folks mentioned. And then, of course, they discussed the valve, the deter, and what is being run.
We have to be, that's officially available.
They postponed it, but that way.
Confirming that they're expected.
You got any shifts?
The third week in.
Back, three, it's a pile, it's still stopped up.
That's what I asked Luke to take over.
And they simply can't get robbed on this side, west side of Kirkland, got a big old pothole, and it's be filled in, right off of Midway, right where you turn on Kirkwood.
Coming back east?
Yeah, right where you go across railroad tracks.
You're talking about going toward New Depot?
Yeah. Right there, it's got a pretty good sized pothole.
Between Mikey's old house and his garden.
Right there, when you turn off, it's right there at his house.
Yeah, I'll just look at it.
Yeah. I guess that's it.
The three sixties and the two sixties, is that four seventy and that three twenty, is that bid? I mean.
That's his, that's his estimate.
No, that's his.
They come, they go out for bid, and it could come in slightly lower or slightly higher.
Can we, we're going to go in bid, don't we?
That's what he said, he's hoping to do that.
You want us to go in bid?
I think that's what the council.
That's what I want to say.
Bid both of them and then.
Okay. James, make sure he's, yeah, everybody.
Okay.
James.
I'm good.
I'll just take care of. Brett, of course, y'all know that, I guess everybody knows that Brett has moved over, his informant moved over to the new location. You know, how many days, how many days has he been at the new location?
Uh, this is week number thirty.
How's it going?
Good.
Got nothing for him?
Yes, yes.
He's, he's, we need to let him, I need to let Brett discuss the bulletproof vest issues, if you will, Brett, what you got on it?
You know, those vests have a shelf life of five years, and they recently, I think last month gone out, this is our five year, doesn't mean that they're not good, it just means that they guarantee them for five years after that time, they didn't.
The warranty is gone.
That's correct. So, I started looking, well, I say I started looking, I didn't, my SWAT supervisor started looking into some different vests. We paid a little over thirteen thousand dollars five years ago. We borrowed the money until our forfeiture money come in, when our forfeiture money come in, we just paid off the loan. I have found, or he's found, I'm sorry, a group called Pharaoh Concepts, it's a lighter vest, but is a, is designed to carry a bigger impact shot. We ordered one of the vests out of the sort front and shot it with different rounds, and it held it.
Yeah.
Doing it out. We put it, we put, we put it on board, no, we couldn't get anybody to volunteer, but it's, it's considerably cheaper, because it's, you install the front plate, back plate, and the side plates, as opposed to it being a wraparound unit, that's what we've got before. In the forfeiture account, I've got five thousand four hundred and seventy-one dollars and thirty-four cents as of today at two o'clock. The money to fit everybody is six thousand nine hundred and ninety-two dollars and sixty-one cents, so I would be asking the council for if they would help me with the thirteen hundred dollars.
What you're going, what you're going to do with the vests you take out, the vests that they've got now?
Usually we put them in, and they'll, they'll carry them in the car until we get everybody fitted. Fitted, and then we usually give those to an agency that can afford them. That's what we do with our last bid.
I won't go into this guarantee, but what was the guarantee? You said they wanted it in five years, what did they want?
The panels. The, or the, the, I call them panels, the armor.
So, if they failed during that five year period of time, what did they do?
That's the question for attorney.
I'm trying to get my hands on what this warranty that they gave, what did it cover? Covered the life of the man on the other side of the vest?
I don't, I don't know that it's, that it's necessarily for the company per se than it is for the seat.
So, I have a question, you said this particular vest, you put the panels in yourself, so, so is it the vests and these that are guaranteed or just that panel? Like, can you, like, then replace the panel if you need to and not replace the whole entire vest?
Yes.
So, if somebody got shot, and it hit a particular part of the panel, you could replace that panel versus having to replace it whole, correct?
Before, the, the, the wraparounds, what we've got before is completely, it's a, it's a, a front and a back, and you would have to replace.
How much, how much are they at piece?
The.
I mean, the price, you say, is this the total for all of them?
Yes.
Six thousand.
Six thousand something.
And how many is that for? Is that twelve?
Yeah.
That's what I was trying to get into something else later. Are you asking the council to pay for the, what money you don't have?
Just, yeah, what I don't, what I don't have, the thirteen hundred dollars.
And then you're going to donate what's left if somebody needs a non-justor possum?
I would think.
No, we can't, we can't.
Non-justor possum.
Which you can donate them.
James already made a motion to, to pay that difference, I'll give a second to do it, or you got any other further?
Or I'm going to pay your whole thing, is that what you were saying?
Kim? You're, you're not asking for that, but would you, Keith's time, but see you pay for the whole amount?
I don't know, I don't think.
I told you you want something else later.
We can use that other.
I just, you know.
Or you'd rather spend five thousand dollars on your classroom?
What, what?
Rather is give you the thirteen hundred dollars and then spend five thousand dollars more on your classrooms that you're putting in?
Yeah.
Thirteen hundred dollars and five thousand dollars for his classroom?
By the full amount.
Well, I don't know, he can use his full amount on his classrooms, this money right here, Keith.
The fifty-four seventy?
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Yeah, yeah, because that's the forfeiture, that's the forfeiture money, he can use it on, he can use it any way he wants to. I just, I just tried to keep so much back, because I knew that I was going to have this again in five years.
So, what was the total? It was six thousand nine hundred and ninety-two dollars and sixty-one cents.
Yeah.
Just plus when you shot.
James? I'm not worried about what we're going to get from the company, if we, if something happens within that five years, but I can tell, but I can tell you that if they tell us five years, we don't want an officer wearing one that's five years and six months.
That's what.
That's the problem, if they give us that five year deadline, we're, I don't know, but I mean, we got to live with it, when they say five years, five years, we got, we got to change. That's just to give it.
Where would we at? I don't know, because they, like, four, four, three, and a motion.
They made a motion for thirteen hundred.
Or redo the.
Keith made motion to pay the whole thing, so I guess we're going, I will throw my motion with Keith, make motion to pay the whole.
So, are you making a motion to pay it for the amount? You got Keith making motion to pay the full amount, and I said, ten, second, all in favor. That's, that's all you got to do?
Thank y'all.
So, I only, NYA, that was NYA building, I don't know if y'all have noticed, we've got a new roof on it, but it's been just a little bit more than what we anticipated to start with, because when they got in there, of course, like anything else, when they go to tearing it, tearing the roof off, there was, there's a couple badly issued, but wasn't exactly what, how they are built now, they're built kind of short and exceeded that, but the, the biggest extra expense that we had was the decking, they had put those things, the trusses, it was like on thirty-eight inch centers, I believe it was, when they got in there, they were, they were bigger, like four each wide trusses on thirty-seven centers with the wood, with the decking, when they were crossing, and the decking had started to dry out some, and actually when the contractor was doing the takeoff and walking on that decking, there's several dry spots that fell through, so we made a judgment call to go ahead and put new decking on top of that, so I think we got a good proof now. But we're ready to move forward with it, and that should help us forge on the grant using the money, where we hadn't been using, they're ready for us to start using that money that they have received for the grant. We'll be, they'll be moving forward with the rest of the work now that we've got the roof on the side. Trying to think if I've got any other. I don't think I've got anything else. If nobody else has got any other business I'm going to move forward to, the council panel, I need to ask for motion to pay. Mike, James, make a motion, Keith second, all in favor. I need to ask for motion to, to, James, all in favor.
State Bank and Trust has been invested in Winfield and Marion County for more than a century, and today, we remain deeply committed to meeting the needs of local families and businesses with excellent financial products and friendly down home service.
But more than that, we're dedicated to supporting the growth, success, and well-being of our community as a whole, because when it comes right down to it, there's nothing more important than community.
And just like our outstanding city officials, police, and fire departments, you can count on State Bank and Trust to help make Winfield and Marion County a great place to live for everyone who calls this area home.
Hello, everyone, this is Chuck from Span Hardware in Winfield, Alabama. Good to be with you today, and just want to let you know, we've got some new things this year for the spring season. As you can see, steel now houses a longboard. We're going to have a full line of the steel zero turnbore, we have a full line of the steel, weed trimmer, and chainsaws, just about anything you need to maintain your home this spring and summer, from lawn and garden equipment to paint, to hardware, anything you need. Come see us, we'll help you if we can. Thank you.
This is Eric Simmons from Furniture Depot. We have a store in Guen and Fayette, we've been serving the people of northwest Alabama for twenty-three some odd years. We'd like to be your furniture store if you'd let us, and we'd like to thank you for your business this past year, and invite you to come and shop with us this coming year, and for the years to come. Merry Christmas and have a happy new year.
Hello, Lee Hines here, owner, operator of Alexander's Heating and Air Condition.
We've been family owned and operated since nineteen fifty-four, proudly serving Marion, Fayette, and Lamar County. We are carrier factory authorized dealers, but service all makes and models. We specialize in residential and light commercial HVAC systems.
So, as we get ready to enter another hot Alabama summer, please remember Alexander's Heating and Air for all your HVAC needs.
Tom Bigby Electric Cooperative was formed for the need for electricity to the local citizens that were living in the rural areas of Marion, Lamar, and portions of Fayette Counties. This line consisted of twelve miles and twenty-two consumers on the road from Guen to Sullivan. Between then and now, there has been a lot of hard work and dedication from a great number of people to make this cooperative what it is today. Tom Bigby Electric Corporation would like to thank each member. You can contact us today at two oh five nine two one six seven one two.
Your story starts at Bevel State Community College. Whether you are just starting out or starting over, Bevel State has an opportunity that is right for you, with five locations serving seven counties. You don't have to go far to start your own success story. Plus, with tuition lower than four-year colleges, you won't need to spend more for a great education. Visit us online at bscc.edu to learn about your options for seamless academic transfer and high demand career tech and health science offerings. Let us help you tell your story.
Enjoy our amazing onsite restaurant and bar with a lunch buffet every Sunday. Relax with a quick getaway with your family and make a splash in our outdoor pool. Enjoy our amazing onsite restaurant and bar with a lunch buffet every Sunday, relax with a quick getaway with your family, and make a splash in our outdoor pool. Book your next event with us, call us at two oh five four six eight four six two five.
At Bowen Funeral Home, we understand the importance of a personal commitment to provide quality service and products with value to meet every family's need. You will find very caring professionals that truly desire to offer dignified service and true value that families need and desire during the loss of their loved one. With our newly renovated facilities, services, and quality merchandise, you can rest assured that we stand ready to meet the needs of your family in honoring lives lived. Bowen Funeral Home is located at nine eighty-one Alabama Highway two fifty-three, just south of Winfield High School, call Tommy Bowen, Certified Funeral Service Practitioner, at two oh five four eight seven four three two seven.